You're live, Mr. Chairman.
Threw it for my church.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to Order, and we will get started with the invocation. I'll call on Vice Chairman Bradley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have asked my pastor, Reverend J. Howard, if he would come up tonight and lead us in prayer.
Welcome Pastor Howard.
Don't worry, I'm not going to preach, too. Daniel 2, verses 20 through 22. Blessed be the name of God forever and ever to whom belong wisdom and might. He changes times and seasons; he removes kings and sets up kings. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding. He reveals deep and hidden things; he knows what is in the darkness, and the light dwells with him. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight with you. We'll pray. Father God, we just thank you for who you are. God, we thank you that your word is clear, that government is your idea. Father, you appoint leaders to protect and lead and guide and direct constituents. And so, Father, we're thankful, God, that you have put that in place. We realize that many decisions that are made are not popular. They're never going to please everyone. Father, we know that ultimately you are in control of all things. And so, God, we give that praise to you. We ask for each one of these who are on this council that you have blessed them, that you would encourage them, protect them, Father, with the decisions they have to make, whether they be popular or unpopular. And, Father, you be with each constituent and help them to realize the same, God, that you're omnipotent over all things. We thank you most of all for your Son Jesus and the salvation that we have through him. Lord, it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. If you would please stand and join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you be seated? Next on the agenda, we have the Approval of Minutes.
We have Approval of Minutes from our October 7th meeting.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have Appearances on Current Agenda Items. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Diane Vreeland. Her topic is 10-F, Philo Allocations Ordinance.
Welcome, Ms. Vreeland.
Hello, welcome, Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, 413 Heather Falls Lane, Simpsonville. It is no secret that I have been against the handing out of Philos, as I feel they are contributing to the congestion in Greenville County, as well as increased deterioration of our roads and our infrastructure. On tonight's agenda, council is introducing an ordinance entitled Fee in Lieu of Tax Allocation, which will allocate additional revenues collected by the county from the payment of fee in lieu of taxes derived from designated multi-county industrial business parks located in Greenville County to the County Infrastructure Fund in order to fund road and related infrastructure projects. I must admit, on the surface, this looks like a great, outside-of-the-box type of thinking that many of us have been advocating for. I do have a few questions regarding this ordinance. One, with every action, there is a reaction or a ripple effect. Can you please articulate the positives and the negatives of this proposed ordinance? Two, can anyone tell me what the current dollar amount is of the parks revenue that is going to the roads and infrastructure now, and conversely, what would that dollar amount be at the max of 80% of the 1% of the multi-county industrial business parks if this was in effect today? And three, what is currently funded with the Philo dollars now, and what programs would be eliminated and/or added when this ordinance is enacted? Also, can you specify, can you specifically name the programs and/or departments currently funded under the present way of doing business, and how will this affect them monetarily? There are many concerned citizens here in the council chambers, and many others watching at home, who look forward to your discussing these matters as they come up on the agenda. I am asking for you or the county administrator to weigh in with your thoughts and/or answers to the questions I have raised. I would like to add that if this ordinance is truly a way to increase funds to be allocated to our roads and infrastructure without raising our taxes, then I would encourage all of you to vote in the affirmative and pass the Philo's allocation ordinance. I'd like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk, so it's part of the public record, and I thank you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vreeland. Next on the agenda, we have Public Hearings. Counselor Collins?
I was in celebration. Forgive me, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, transfer of property on Worley Road. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding it ordinance to authorize the transfer of 6.07 acres of real property located on Worley Road to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority.
Your time's up.
And to authorize the execution of deeds and any other documents and agreements related thereto. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak to this public hearing?
Chairman, Mr. Collins, we have no speakers for this public hearing.
There being no further speakers, I declare this public hearing closed. Mr. Chair, I get tickled a little bit, so I might be in that moment.
You're fine. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have Resolutions. A, 2026 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, Northside Park. Counselor Collins, you get your full time this time.
2026 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, Northside Park. Mr. Chairman, in motion, I move for adoption of the resolution to commit county funds to match a land and water conservation fund grant from the National Park Service, United States Department of the Interior, to Greenville County Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, a department of county council, or county of Greenville County, South Carolina. I'm all over the place now. Forgive me.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Next, we'll move to ordinances at third reading. Start with CZ 2025-054. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 259 Beacon Street and 101 Orr Street, requesting rezoning from NC to NC major change.
I move adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Then we have CZ 2025-058. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 1451 Donaldson Road and Augusta Road, requesting rezoning from C2 to S1. I move adoption of the ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. General Obligation Bond Request, Twin Chimneys. Mr. Chairman, in motion, I move for the adoption at third reading, an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million Greenville County, South Carolina, General Obligation Bonds Series 2025-C, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the repayment or payment thereof and any other matters relating thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And finally, in this section, we have Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, transfer of property on Worley Road. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, transfer of property on Worley Road. Mr. Chairman, in motion, I move for the adoption at the third reading, an ordinance to authorize the transfer of 6.07 acres of real property located on Worley Road to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority, and to authorize the execution of deeds and any other documents and agreements related thereto.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, three in opposition.
Thank you. The motion passes. We will now move to ordinances at second reading. Start with CZ 2025-061. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 7 Walt Horse Road Distinction, requesting rezoning from C2 to S1. The planning commission and committee recommended denial. On behalf of the committee, I move to deny this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-062. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at Gunner Road, requesting rezoning from RR1 to AG. The planning commission and committee recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of this ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. CZ 2025-064. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 340 Bagwell Road, requesting rezoning from RS to R20. The planning commission and committee recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I move approval of the ordinance at second reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Then we have CZ 2025-065. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 114 Timers Road, requesting rezoning from C2 to FRD. The planning commission and committee recommended approval with conditions. And I have the amendment for the conditions.
State your amendment.
I move to amend the request to add the following conditions. One, state the hours of operation are from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. Two, is an increase in landscaping and buffering around the buildings. And three, provide road frontage landscaping.
All right. Does everybody understand the motion to amend? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
So, on behalf of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval for the ordinance at second reading.
All right. Thank you. So, all in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We will now move on to ordinances at first reading. Counselor Bradley.
I present for first reading zoning documents CZ-2025-67 through CZ-2025-70.
All right. We will refer those to the Plan and Development Committee. Move next to Greenville County Zoning Text Amendment, Mobile Food Unit, CZ 2025-066. Counsel Bradley.
I present for first reading, an ordinance to amend the Greenville County zoning ordinance to amend Article IV definitions, Article VI, Table 6.1, use permits used by special exceptions, and condition use, Section 6.2, use conditions.
Thank you. We will refer this to the Plan and Development Committee as well. Next, we have Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment, Project Elevate. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment Project Elevate. I present for first reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park.
This will stay on the council floor. Next, we have D. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment Project Briarwood. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville-Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement Amendment Project Briarwood. I present for first reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park of Greenville and Anderson Counties, so as to enlarge the park to include certain property owned by a company known to Anderson County as Project Briarwood.
Thank you. And that will stay on the council floor as well. Next, we have E. Piedmont Public Safety Service, Piedmont Fire Department, transfer of property. Counselor Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Piedmont Public Service District, Piedmont Fire Department, transfer of property. I present for first reading, an ordinance to authorize the transfer approximately 15.8 acres of real property located off of Highway 20 in Greenville County to the Piedmont Public Service District, and to authorize the execution of deeds and any other documents and agreements related thereto.
Thank you. This will stay on the council floor. Next, we have F. Fee in Lieu of Tax Allocations Ordinance. Counselor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I present for the first reading, an ordinance to allocate additional specified revenues collected by the county from the payment of fee in lieu of tax derived from designated Mother County Industrial Business Parks located in Greenville County Infrastructure Fund in order to fund roads and related infrastructure projects.
Thank you. That will stay on the council floor. And we will move to G, which is Sign Ordinance Amendment. Counselor Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As noted in the county agenda package, I present for the first reading, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 4926, the Greenville County sign ordinance, to change the definition of on-premise signs, and request chairman to forward this item to the appropriate committee.
Thank you. And we will refer this to Roads, Infrastructure, and Public Works. Next on the agenda, we have Committee Reports. Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move to appoint the following. Gotcha. Thank you. Joshua Jones, Danielle Nance, Jake O'Dear, and Christina Zoli to fill our five vacancies on the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Brad Metcalf and Van Swaffer to fill two vacancies on the Airport and Byrons Planning Commission. Richard Wells to fill one vacancy on the Boiling Springs Fire Board. Jenny Byers to fill one vacancy on the Brookfield Special Tax District Board. John Pasden and Robert Powell to fill two vacancies on the Shannon Clear Community Commission. James Allison and Michael Milham to fill two vacancies on the Clear Spring Fire and Rescue District Board. Susan Linus to fill one of three vacancies on the Devinger Tax District Commission. Benjamin Pete to fill one vacancy on the Donaldson Fire Service Area Board. David Armstrong to fill one of the two vacancies on the Linkside Special Tax District Board. Randy Boyett, Clemson, Davenport, and Sarah Fraser to fill three vacancies on the Oak Mill Estate's Tax District Commission. Justin Austin and Britton Swingle to fill two vacancies on the Lake Forest Special Tax District Board. And Ray Lattimore to fill one vacancy on the Greenville Technical College Area Commission.
All right. Thank you. And everybody understands the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And congratulations to everyone for your new appointments. Next, we will move to Public Comments. I believe we have two, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, our first speaker is Ed Paxton. His topic is GADC, Fire Station Study, and Greater Greenville Sanitation Appointments.
Welcome, Mr. Paxton.
I have three subjects. The first one, I opine that we need to do away with this Greenville area development corporation. Our roads are choking. Few homes are available. Schools are splitting at the seams. And for the lot of the people who don't like our town like it is, go on down to Atlanta and be happy. The second thing is, I opine that the fire department consolidation thing is silly. It smells like Reedy Falls did 50 years ago. And it's going to cost the residents living in well-managed fire districts, just like the consolidation of the sewer districts did a year or so ago. Again, if developers don't like our community, let them go to Atlanta. Thirdly, I urge you to stop your nominating process for a greater Greenville sanitation commissioner until you find a candidate who will bring value by experience in the waste industry. And you take steps to hogtie, and I listen to me carefully, please, DHEX wants for transloaders which are not cost-effective, and Steve Cole's ego kicker known as side-loading collection trucks. This thing's getting out of hand.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. And Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Daniel Skoll. His topic is Issues with the Tax Office.
Welcome, Mr. Skoll.
So, six days ago, I've received a seizure notice about my house being seized just by the county of Greenville for unpaid taxes, which I had paid. And my concern is that there is no verifying just when they placed the seizure notice on the house, whether or not taxes have indeed been paid. And that when I notified them, they said, "Well, this was sent out after I had paid my taxes." Well, this was physically placed on my house six days ago. And the person that placed it on my house could have very easily have verified whether or not that property's taxes had indeed been paid. Now, I am a Gulf War veteran. I suffer from PTSD. When I saw this notice, I had a severe panic attack. I started to cry because I thought that I had lost my house. When I contacted the tax assessor's office, they said, "Oops." And when I came in just to complain, they said, "Well, this is happening to multiple people." So, my concern is that there is no oversight. And also, how many people has this happened to? Hundreds or thousands? And that I had left you a voicemail this morning, and that I am very deeply concerned just that the tax assessor's office is placing seizure notices on houses just where the property taxes have indeed been paid. And that I am just very concerned because I can imagine somebody which is 90 years old seeing this on their house, having a heart attack. And that is my concern, is how many other people have been affected. And that I know that you have tried, it's just to reach out, and that it's just a vicious circle, that they are giving excuses but no answers. And that is what I am asking for, just his answers, as well as accountability, as well as oversight. And thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much. And just so you know, I did, I know I tried to call you back today, but I'm asking about that. And as soon as I get some answers to that, I'll make sure to reach back out to you. So, thank you for letting us know about it.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the Administrator's Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm happy to report that this Thursday, October 23rd, there'll be a new traffic pattern in front of this building here. It's probably about our fifth one. This one is getting closer to the final one for us. There'll be basically all roads within the development, or many of the roads, will be one-way. There will be six new handicap parking spaces close to the building. These will be for the public only, not for employees, as well as a new tax drop-off box that's in place, and a people drop-off place.
Good timing.
So, they can pull right up, drop people off, go into the garage. The garage drive will be one-way, so you'll have to turn right into the garage. When you come out, you have to turn right to go around and go past the new area, because the current access road will be taken up. It's just a temporary road. And so, hopefully, this will flow very smoothly. We'll have it manned by parking attendants, deputies, and some other staff to ensure that the traffic flows very nicely, and people don't get lost. The signage, we have good signage out there, and it should be a very nice improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for the administrator, and if I'm catching you off guard, next council meeting's fine. But the tax office that puts those notices out, is that the same, that we're the only county that is separate from the auditor's office in the whole state?
Right. It's our tax collector's responsible for the tax sale. And so, a number of those notices went out. I believe we contract out with the posting of it. So, what very possibly could happen, and I'll talk to this gentleman after the meeting tonight, very possible it was a timing issue, where we have to send the addresses to the vendor, and if it's paid in that time, there may be crosswires. And at times, sometimes the information that we have is not correct, and they have to correct it. So, we'll get to the bottom of it and make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay. And I did have another one. With the new traffic pattern, the tax drop-off box, can we also get the American Flag Honor Disposal Container where people can use that outside instead of having to come inside?
I would suggest we put that out in the garage, because we're going to have another drop-off box out in the garage for taxes. We're going to have two. So, I would suggest we put it there, because I'm concerned that by putting it out with the other drop-off box up on the median, it's going to get hit. And so, I'd prefer to keep it sheltered.
You might get flags for taxes, too.
All right. Next, we have requests and motions by council members. Anybody have anything tonight? I'm going to take a quick second. I know he probably doesn't want me to do this, but our administrator, I caught him in my district the other day, or he's in my district, but he was at the 7-Eleven, and he was assisting somebody with the exact same paper that you just had back there. He didn't have to do it. He offered his services to help, and I just wanted to acknowledge our administrator for doing that. That meant a lot to me for him to take the time to do that for that gentleman. So, thank you very much. Anybody else having, yes, sir? Counselor Mitchell?
I just want to say that I got several calls when we were going through our board and commission reviews, and they were saying to me- And they were saying to me how fortunate we were to have the staff that we have because they were completely transparent and they were very helpful in the whole process of making sure that they got all their paperwork in and everything so that they could apply appropriately and just go through the process. It made it real easy for them. So, I wanted to say that and thank all of our staff who worked on that on behalf of the citizens who have called me. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertained one final motion?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.